Do the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Since this is a special meeting.
Uh, can everybody turn their mic on, please?
Since this is a special meeting, we're going to allow discussion from the audience after the presentation for number two, discussion and action on the Chromebook purchase. So you will have a chance to get feedback at that point. Um, so with that, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, a fairly, um, unique situation here in which we're calling a special meeting for the purchase of any item like or above twenty-five thousand dollars. So, uh, this is a process that started back in, uh, May of, of twenty seventeen. Uh, usually a normal school district cycle around April, May, you're thinking about, you know, what sort of tech purchases are we going to be making for the upcoming school year? Uh, putting that order in, having it be here over the summer, the tech team getting their hands on it and getting it ready for, for August. Uh, this past May was a little different, though, from a standpoint of, uh, we really weren't sure at that time whether we're going to continue to move forward, uh, with the iPads. We'd heard enough discussion, uh, to make us just kind of second guess, is this really the direction we want to continue to go in? The, the keyboard being one of the, the major, uh, pieces of, of really questioning the functionality of an iPad, especially at grades, um, six through twelve. And so what we decided to do at that time is we, we made purchases, um, across the district, uh, Chromebooks for, for the Plex, uh, program for fifth grade, um, computers, uh, desktops at different areas of, of the district, but we held off on any personal, um, devices for our students. Uh, we kind of just let them roll over another year with the iPads, um, and, and a couple of those at the sixth, sixth grade level, especially, uh, working on twenty-fourteens, um, the teams have been busy making sure that they could maintain those throughout this year. And so the idea was that this would allow us to kind of continue to, uh, look into whether, uh, or look at other options, uh, to purchase for, for our students. And so, uh, throughout the fall, as we discussed this, uh, as, as a, as a team, um, we started to think about what a replacement schedule would look like as we bring in, uh, new devices. Uh, by November, early December, we started to send out, uh, surveys to our staff, uh, put together, uh, a survey of how the iPads are being used, what, uh, what bringing in a, a new device at this time of the year, what sort of, uh, possible disruption that would have from a teaching standpoint, how are the iPads predominantly being used? And using that survey data, uh, we determined that, uh, it was, uh, more than possible and we should move forward with, with the purchase of, of Chromebooks. Um, and so at that time, you're talking now, uh, January-ish, and you don't want to get quotes too soon, because the way tech changes, uh, it could be, uh, those quotes only good for, for so long. And so, uh, late or early to middle of last week, uh, we went ahead and got quotes that were, uh, well, what we had expected is, uh, the same prices for the Chromebooks that we got from our fifth graders, which were two-hundred-and-fifty dollars apiece, uh, the middle to high-end Chromebook, uh, two-fifty apiece plus twenty-five for the management council, council, two-seventy-five apiece is what we had in the budget for one grade level, in essence. When we got the quote, uh, mid-last week, they came in with the management council at two-oh-two, uh, for a number of reasons, uh, one being the end of the quarter for this company, two, at, not a lot of districts are buying in January, right? Their, their, that's season is, is come and gone, and people are thinking more about, what are we going to do for next year come, come May? And so we saw the price, price drop. It's, it's an opportunity for us to, uh, well, initially, we had set aside sixty thousand dollars for this purchase. Uh, we had planned on two-hundred-and-twenty Chromebooks. That was going to take us right up to that sixty thousand dollar number. With this, uh, price break, um, it was going to save us approximately fifteen thousand dollars, so nothing, uh, certainly nothing to sneeze at. And, uh, we would be remiss, I think, to bring this, this to the board in a timely manner. That quote is only good through January thirty-first, when new pricing would be instituted, um, again. So, as we began to lay out the replacement schedule, um, we, we saw that the, the best opportunity for next year would have, to, to, to bring Chromebooks across the high school and the middle school, um, as well, um, leaving the seniors out of it for right now. We would have had to have purchased four grade worths, uh, grades' worth of Chromebooks for next year, putting a strain, uh, quite frankly, on, on, on next year's budget in the tech department area. And so with that fifteen thousand dollars that we were going to, to save, um, we took that fifteen thousand dollars plus about an additional, um, twenty to twenty-five out of the, uh, the tech department foregoing some, um, purchases and some copier savings that we have, uh, for this year, we're able to kind of bump that up and purchase a second set of Chromebooks, uh, this year that we could use, uh, for a couple of different purposes. One, uh, we could certainly use it for our testing period in March, in which we could have some flexibility with ninth and tenth grade testing, not worried about bringing them to the, to the lab, have these Chromebooks available for our entire, uh, freshman and sophomore class and make testing a lot easier for those students. And then, second of all, as, as, we haven't really played this, this piece out of it, but we could roll out some additional Chromebooks, um, to the middle school. We haven't brought that forth yet to them about what that would look like, uh, but they are certainly there to be used. And as you've seen the replacement schedule, we would bring the, the current second set to your, current sixth graders, seventh graders next year, they would take on these, and then we'd be purchasing three more grade levels worth for next year. And we would essentially have sixth through eleventh grade covered, um, with, with a, with a Chromebook device. And so we're doing a couple of things. We're bringing forward, um, a proposal that, um, we haven't seen these, these prices, um, and so obviously there's a financial impact, not on the device that we're choosing, but on the timing of this is why, is, is the financial impact. Um, but, uh, the ability to, to take some pressure off of next year's budget, get some devices into the hands of our students this year, um, we need, we couldn't, we couldn't pass that opportunity up. And so, uh, administration is recommending, uh, the purchase of, of these, of these Chromebooks, because the purchase is greater than twenty-five thousand dollars. Todd and Chris are here. I don't know if you guys want to have a, a seat, please, at the, at the table. Yeah. Uh, Chris is our, our, uh, technology services, uh, manager. Todd is our digital learning coordinator. And so we've kind of got the operational side and the teaching side here covered. If there's, uh, questions that you want to dive into on this, but, uh, the proposal itself simply lays out some of the pieces that we saw in, in the survey, why we feel confident moving ahead with Chromebooks from the staff and student side, uh, the operational rationale Chris put together. There's some instructional rationale there that, that Todd can touch on further if need be. And then, simply because we, we aren't, we aren't groundbreaking by purchasing, uh, Chromebooks. This isn't groundbreaking in Wisconsin or groundbreaking to, to anywhere else. Just wanted to lay out some of the schools, uh, that we touched upon, uh, technology resources advisor, who is a IT consultant on the east side. We reached out to them to get a sense of, you know, what are, who's using Chromebooks. Um, their response was easier to list who's not. So it, it's not that we're, we're groundbreaking in any sense of, of imagination, but we do, did want to bring this forward, um, for, for, for discussion and, and, um, action tonight.
Any question?
So the staff are in favor of these more so than the iPad?
I think what, Todd, maybe you want to address that.
Um, I think the things that the staff and students are lacking with an iPad, everyone is in agreement on having that keyboard. It's such a crucial factor. A lot of things that are, they're being used for, the iPad's being used for currently, um, it's all accessible through web tools, so it can be, um, utilized and that access through the Chromebook, so it's not unique to the iPad. There'll be just a few things we'll have to look for, um, some alternate ways to do business with some of the apps, but not May. For the most of how we're using it, shifting from an iPad to a Chromebook is going to be fairly seamless.
Todd, uh, to expound on that, the, the current iPads in the ninth grade are twenty-fifteen or twenty-sixteen iPads. Do you recall off the top of your head? In either case, we're going to bunch those up, and some will flow down to the elementary levels, but some will just be carted up, that if teachers need to use them, they can get a class set on any given day. It's just that the Chromebook's going to be the predomin, the predominant device, and Chromebook, and iPads will be accessible through a cart for now while they transition.
Transition.
As they transition from one device to another. So, um, even the, out of the twenty-six teachers, there were three who said that this could cause a disruption, so let's cart them up, get them into a cart, and allow them to be, um, accessible to those teachers who, who need it for different lessons throughout the, the spring.
Do you have enough time to get these things in the, in the Whitno way?
Whitno. Yeah, we, we should. This onboarding, if you want, is hours less than an iPad. Management on an iPad, I mean, Todd's involved, I'm involved, Jack's involved, the management of this Chromebook, um, and setting it up, the unboxing is the hardest part, because there's so many, you know, and the, the acetates, we acetate every one of them.
That's it there?
This is, yeah, this.
This the unit?
Nancy has the same unit. Yep, I believe John has one. Jonathan's got one, um, Kevin's got one, and Stephen's got one. Um, you know, when Stephen wanted his, I mean, it was just, you have your Gmail account, you could log onto this right now and get your, your stuff. It's that easy.
So when we flipped over to the iPads, all of a sudden, we had to realize we had to buy for the whole entire high school. We were going to do it in two years, do you recall this?
Yeah.
And we had to do it all in one year. Does that play in? Does that?
I think the schedule that we put in there, we sat and planned that out intentionally. So a couple of different things we were looking at was the current ages of the iPads, which were pushing some of the limit on there now. And we also were very intentional about getting into a cycle that we could maintain, because if you aren't in a main, you know, you can't buy like seven grades all in one year and then nothing for three years. So from a budgetary piece of it, so we were very intentional about planning out, I don't know, the next five or six years in that color-coded chart that's in there. That was very intentional. And so we were trying to say if we give them to, so, you know, while it, while of course we'd all like to have seniors before they head off to college to have it, the reality is, is that if we bought them a new one, the cycle of getting into it, well, then it would be five years old here. And so we played with all of those, you know, in terms of the, the replacement cycle. So we think that this plays itself out well as we get into a budgetary cycle with the number of grades we're replacing on a consistent basis. So, so again, doubling up some of the iPads, the age of some of the iPads that the students have, grades six through twelve, um, and then getting into this cycle from a budgetary standpoint. So I think it's two batches this year, then three, then two, then one, and then we'd be in a, in a cycle that makes sense in terms of replacing it. And we figured with technology, that's way farther out than we should be planning right now, because who knows what five years from, I mean, that's, but from a budgetary standpoint, at least in terms of the devices that kids would be using. Um, and instructionally, it seemed to make sense with the, the grades that we were being able to do and pass forward, so.
So some kids would have iPad and some would have a Chromebook?
So next year, everybody but eighth and twelfth graders, eighth and twelfth graders would still keep iPads. So if you think about an eighth grader next year, they would have had iPads for sixth and seventh grade. It, it's what the eighth graders have been. Again, money being limitless, we would do all this, but we're not able to. Same thing with seniors. They've had it for the last four or five years, so it's, that's what they've come to know. Um, and we know that many of our seniors aren't right now. So it's, it's just a, you know, if we could, yeah.
What about a case or something, or what, what are we doing?
These actual, um, the Chromebooks that we've seen, um, there's a, a Cudahy Tech Ninja that actually the instructor created a, we, we watched a video. He created a, a whiteboard. It's almost like, the issue with the Chromebook is the flexibility of this right here. Kids walk around with them like this, they, you know, and this breaks. It's a thirty to forty-dollar part, but this guy created a stick-on, it's like, uh.
Stiffens it?
Yeah, rigidity. Um, and it's also a whiteboard, where they can write on, you know, take notes or what have you. Um, with this particular model that we're looking at, this is the educational model. They built in the rubber bumpers around the sides. The rigidity of the screen is a lot better. So, um, it, it's just, it's just a better Chromebook. You know, this is a top, top-of-the-line in the mid-level. We're not, we're, we're driving a, uh, I don't want to say.
Careful.
Not a Ford.
I have two of those.
Not a Ford Larry yet, but, you know.
And there's, there's insurance options out there, too. We haven't, we haven't dived into that yet, and that might be something that we explore and potentially relate to parents, where if they want to buy, uh, some, some sort of insurance for their device over, over the course of four years is usually what I've seen the length of those periods ago. Um, it's, it's, uh, it's an option that, that we could, um, that we could relate to parents. But this, this ten-dollar piece that we saw, that, that puts on the top, allows some teachers, I think, some pretty cool flexibility to, to not only be using the device, but use, use a smart board, hold up your answers, and, you know, do different things like that. It's a, it's a unique purchase that, that the district could certainly handle at that, um, at, at that point as well. And so that would be a.
A lot of the other, um, it, the, the cases that I've seen, the chargers are, they're a lot bigger. It's like a laptop charger. And if they put that in there, put it on here, similar to this, throw it in the bag, put the bag down like this, it's going to, you know, damage the, you have the same charger. It's hard to carry that around in a bag, you know, if it had a nice little pouch, but I've not seen anything like that. Most of the schools that I've talked to, um, I've not seen some offer a sleeve, which I, I don't think it's needed, but.
And for the most part, our kids took care of their iPads? We didn't?
Well, boxed in an outer box. It's, it's hard to break those. Um, we, we, we had some breakage, but not what we thought we would see.
So they took ownership?
Yeah, yeah.
And so in our, our acceptable use policy now, we've modified that, uh, dependent on, obviously, uh, vote tonight, but take, took out the terms iPad, put devices in there instead. The breakdowns of what potential breakage would mean for both the iPad and for now the Chromebook. We got those prices in there, so, um, we can be transparent about what the, what those pieces are, and, and if certain things would break, uh, we move forward.
Yes, another thing, we, similar to, two years ago when we started our student help desk, um, that was part of, we were going to get students involved in fixing the iPads. Well, you know, you, the, the cleanliness that's needed to fix the glass on an iPad, we don't have that shop here. Um, Mesquigo, uh, when we were out looking on Mesquigo, I saw a kid replace a, a LCD screen in the twenty minutes that we were there, the student, you know, giving them, and we have, um, I believe we have three student helpers this semester that, you know, they're helping us with iPads, they help us with everything. This, fixing these Chromebooks, if you can Google any, anything out there, how to fix this model Chromebook, it's pretty much a video that shows you within twenty minutes, you could be replacing the hinge, the screen, the keyboard, what have you. So the kids are, the kids are kind of excited about it, too.
And then twenty-three dollars and seventy-five cents per unit is a license?
That connects this iPad, it locks that iPad, or not iPad, the Chromebook to Whitno.
It's a control console, you said, right?
Yes, it's a, um, mobile device management. Um, we have it for the iPads. This twenty-five dollars keeps track of who's got it, um, statistics about it. We haven't really dug into the statistics about, you know, usage when it was on. I did a little bit about a question today, you know, how long it was being used, at what times, you know, what was being done, uh, on the iPad, or on the Chromebook.
One time, P?
Yes, one time for the lifetime of, of the, uh, device.
Any other questions, Quinn?
No.
Yeah, I want to know, um, why we seem to have focused on the Chromebook? How much looking did we do at a Windows-based platform?
Chris, you want to take a little, to just kind of speak to the, the Windows-based platform?
The Windows-based platform, um, we've been down that road. We've had, you know, labs full of, you know, thirty, thirty PCs. Um, the Windows ten, the, the licensing, first of all, the operating system, the Microsoft Office, um, added cost, a lot of added cost. Uh, the Windows, it's great, we use it, Windows ten on all of the, uh, you know, a lot, most of the secretaries have Windows machines.
So, uh, you, if you buy a Windows-based platform, you, it doesn't come with the operating system?
Depends where you buy it.
Okay, so through the avenue that the school district's taken by, it.
It will come with a, a professional Windows ten professional.
So that shouldn't add to the cost?
Well, it's, it's still going to be, you're not getting the price point of a, uh, a two-hundred-dollar this particular Chromebook.
So, uh, uh, let me, let me tell you the whole picture I'm concerned about, and then maybe you can come up with how to address my concerns, because otherwise I could ask a bunch of questions. And so, uh, first off, in the past, it seemed like, uh, the previous, previous iteration of the tech department seemed to be tunnel-visioned on Apple. And we ended up with the iPad. Um, I advised a couple of board members that I knew I wasn't on the board yet, um, that, you know, that seemed to, I don't see how that would really prepare our kids when, uh, for, you know, the future, when it's such a limited device, and for their world to be experienced on a, on a seven-inch touchscreen, or however big that mini was, I, I, and, and most of the stuff does not use that operating system and everything else. But they went with it anyway. Um, so, fast forward to now. So, uh, I was pleased that, that Dr. Olson wanted to consider other platforms, but the sense I was getting was that we didn't consider platforms other than the, the Chromebook. For me, in a perfect world, we would, um, we would have explored in depth the, in a comparison head-to-head, Chromebooks versus a Windows-based platform, whatever comparable price point would be. There are Netbooks out there that have solid-state drives, and, um, they're Windows-based, they have solid-state drives, they've, uh, about the same size of that, of that machine, um, that are in the same price point. And, and that's, and that's looking at non-district pricing. Um, and worrying about the Windows-based, the, the Microsoft Office license, there's open-source, um, suites out there like.
We offer that now.
Like an OpenOffice that costs nothing.
Right.
In fact, if somebody said, well, maybe nothing for the individual, but how about for an organization, there's nobody to pay. It's, it's completely open-source free.
Similar to what we're getting with Google Education, though.
And it looks very much like Windows, or Microsoft Office suite, but, but it's free and works, uh, everything I've found and used myself is complete compatibility, unlike, obviously, the stuff we'd experienced with, with, um, the iPad and that operating system. So, the comparisons I've done, to me, the ideal solution would be to go with a Windows-based platform and start replacing it from twelfth grade down. And the reason I say from twelfth grade down is I, I looked at a number of different websites, um, on desktop stuff, because though there are many, uh, many businesses that work tablets and that kind of stuff into their things, like sales folks on the road and that kind of stuff, where they can just draw a bill up on their, on their tablet, um, when you start looking at, at computer-based stuff, over eighty percent of the world is, is on Windows. And so if we're wanting to prepare the students for the future, we, we start with the seniors, and we go with a Windows platform, if we can do it priced comparably, and, and we work down. And why the seniors? Because they're about to, to hit the road and go into that, you know, eighty percent-plus, uh, world outside of us. So, it, it just seems like we've had tunnel vision on Chromebooks, starting with, I think it was December, you fielded some Chromebooks to some freshmen, was it, or something like that, to see what they thought? And did we field any PCs, any Windows-based platform to some, anybody to see what they thought? So those are my, my concerns, because I'm afraid that we'll be, um, changing out all-new again in a few years. And personally with the Chromebook, I have issued to me, from you guys, um, that's why I'm using an older PC notebook. I, I can get it to do everything I want it to do, and a Chromebook frustrates me. And we want these kids to be fluent with where they go from here.
To speak to the, the Windows-based, whether it's a laptop, PC, server, whatever, um, we do have a cart of thirty-one HP laptop books that are checked out regularly. They connect to the network like you, like everyone's used to. You have your home drive. It's not in the cloud. You can save your stuff to your H drive. Um, the way the enterprise works, you know, you log on with a Jay Jones, you have your, you're automatically mapped to your home drive. You have a public drive where teachers used to store things. Now it's just, it's held up in the cloud. Um, we do have a programming, just thirty-two, thirty, thirty to thirty-two PCs in there that are Windows-based also. Um, so there's sixty, is there a Windows lab at the middle school? Middle school has a Windows lab also, a PC-based lab. Um, so there's ninety, ninety-plus PCs, Windows-based PCs around the district. Um, with the new STEM initiative, um, there's going to be another business lab that will be Windows-based. Um, this is just replacing the device. Um, walking in the hallways, you've been here, you see kids on this a lot. Um, it's a, it's just the device. Um, the, right now, I looked at, you know, I don't want to say that, you know, two thousand and fifteen, you know, fifty-three percent of the nation was using Chromebooks. In two thousand and fifteen, they were all moving from Apples. That, I wouldn't want to be an Apple employee, educational employee right now. Nobody is buying that stuff. The, the move, the educational trend, which, you know, twenty years I've been in this business, is moving towards Chromebooks. I do see, I do see your need for Windows-based devices. Um, it's, you know where your files are, you know how to manage your hard drive, you know, there are other, you know, there's no antivirus involved with this.
Yeah.
We had a question brought up in regards to, you know, some, some chipset problems. These were all patched within a week of that issue. And through that MDM, I can see that, you know, if a, uh, Chromebook hasn't been turned on, I can run a report. In any case, getting off the subject there, um, I don't know why they weren't looked at. I can't tell you that right now.
Well, Chris, can you, can you talk about what a comparable laptop to the Chromebook, a comparable price point laptop, what that would mean as far as integration into the district? And that's part of the reason we didn't go as in-depth on any comparable laptop.
But did you look at Netbooks, which is just a smaller laptop? And that's a small, uh, it's about the same framework, uh, as, as that. And as far as the device, the device matters because the architecture matters and how the kids interact. And, and one more thing I'd say is, uh, we have ninety-some, um, ninety-some, uh, Windows-based machines throughout the district in different labs. We might not have to buy or maintain those if we had, or most of those, if, if we had, if every kid walking around had their own, you know, computer lab-type machine in their hands, you know what I mean? So, there's, there's a, there could be a, some, some cost reduction there and, and space, and space gain in the district by not having to equip and maintain a space with thirty, uh, PCs. And I, and I still think for my, for my, the way I think, I'm, I'm thinking we, we get kids over on a platform that truly preps them for leaving here, which is our whole goal. And I also, um, uh, you're, you're fifty or fifty-three percent on Chromebooks.
Mm-hmm.
That is limited to the educational world, right?
In two thousand and fifteen, correct.
So at one point, near a hundred percent of the educational world, uh, as in, you know, twelfth grade on down, was Apple. Um, and.
No, I wouldn't say that.
Well, when I started, when I got to use my first computer in a school situation, it was when I was in high school, a long time ago. And the only thing schools had was Apple, and because Apple, that was because Apple was very smart in basically giving, or nearly giving, these expensive machines monochrome screens and three-quarter-inch floppy drives and stuff to, uh, to, um, schools.
So you're talking about twenty, thirty years ago, not five years ago?
Well.
Cause with the first computer that I had in my school was the Apple, where you had the little, like, I mean, but,
Yes.
Talking the nineties, eighties and nineties, we're not talking about.
We're talking eighty.
Twenty, twelve, twenty thirteen.
Exactly, so that's what I'm talking about. So initially when this started out, it was like a hundred percent Apple and over the several decades it has progressed into, laugh if you want, I.
I'm not laughing, I had a typewriter, so.
Hey, I didn't get a computer until I was at that school, so, finishing that school, so anyway. I'm just saying that over the decades, not years, but decades, you know, we have progressed from pretty much a hundred percent Apple to mostly Android in the educational world, but we're not prepping kids to stay in the educational world. I mean, that entire time, it's been high nineties, uh, and, and around there for, for Microsoft based stuff. Now, if you look worldwide, in all platforms, Android has taken over. But that's because they're, they're including a phone and most people have, most people on down to a lot of kids in grade school have, you know, the elementary schools have a phone. So, when, I mean, and there's a number of websites, I could, if you had a display cable for me, I could put it up on a screen to, to show people what I'm talking about. But my, my concern is the same in that, well, I've already said it. And then, when you talk about replacing it, the freshmen first, because they have the oldest machines, give them the seniors' machines and give the seniors the, the newer platform that would actually, and preferably a platform that preps them for the, for next year, whatever next year might bring for them.
So, if I can speak from, from my experience, I have a Netbook. This far out works and performs the Netbook, and I've had two. This, I was skeptical at first, this far outperformed it. So I, if I had the choice between the two, I would go with this all day. And then, so, we're, we're noticing that, we know that kids that have iPod, iPads are doing most of their work at home on regular laptops. So they're getting the exposure and the experience with a Windows based product at home. They get to do that, they do their work there. This would give them the ability to do a lot more work, they still may need to use a Windows base at home, but this will be more prudent and functional than the actual iPad. So I don't think doing this is going to say, oh, you know, our kids aren't gonna use Windows products. People have them at home, you use them at home, you go to libraries at the library, whatever, there's an avenue to use it and still get that experience. But I think this is a better version than the iPad. And it gets us into that realm where kids can have a keyboard and do what they need to do.
No question, this is a better platform than the iPad. I don't think it's a better platform than the Windows. I've had a Netbook for years and the only reason the Chromebook could possibly outperform my Netbook is because my Netbook's probably, uh, seven, seven or eight years old, probably eight years old. I would be interested in seeing a current Netbook versus a current Chromebook to be an actual comparison. But, um, I can easily do way more on my eight-year-old Netbook than I could on my less than one-year-old Chromebook because I've been using Windows stuff for years. And I can't, like I said, I'm on, I'm on an older laptop right now because it's, I can get it to do whatever I want versus, uh, versus my ability to use that Chromebook. So I'm not sure what the compatibilities are, I'm sure it's gotta be better than the iPad. I'm, I'm not really interested in comparing this to the iPad, cause I, I, the iPad is the wrong thing, so. But that's, that's my concern is the age of the stuff the seniors have versus the freshmen. To me, that's irrelevant, because we just make sure that whoever's going to be keeping the, the iPad platform right now, we just give them the newest year groups of, of iPads and we, and we give the new platform to, I would say, starting with the seniors, because of how soon they're, they're getting out of, of our system. But I think the platform, especially if the platform is a Windows based platform and not everybody. I know a number of kids that are seniors now that don't have a computer or email at home. So.
What was that?
I said, I know a number of, um, okay, I can think of at least two right now, kids, uh, just off the cuff, that I know there are seniors that still don't have a computer at home.
They don't have email?
Well, they do, I think because of the iPad, they, actually, they don't have an internet connection. I know, um.
You're saying at home?
At home, yeah.
Do we still have MiFi's for kids who don't care? So if those kids don't have it, the district does provide that through that access, so we wanna make sure. So I just wanna, if you know them and there's.
That's the first I've heard of this, really.
That's, before I got here, yeah.
Did, I did not know that we provided, uh, uh, mobile data source for, for kids to do that.
Part of the E rate is equal accessibility for all students for all learning, so.
Yeah, I just.
Those families are shared when they, again, they, yep.
And they all knew that?
So we do a survey, we do a survey, in the survey when we asked, does your family have that, does not, and please contact. So if you're knowing and they're struggling completing work or doing whatever, please refer them to.
Yep, I'll do that.
Chris, why are people moving, you said, you know, since a couple of years ago, fifty percent's coming to Chrome, why, why, why the move? Away from the, uh.
Cost?
Cost?
The.
Not technology reasons?
Cost, I mean, the internet device is an internet device. The, uh, you know, back to, you know, John's thing about the, the laptops, um, Netbooks, they're, you know, depending on what you buy and what type of machine you're, you're buying. If it's in, you know, the, the preparation, the onboarding, the Pixie boot it's called. Any Windows machine in the district right now, we have a Windows, uh, image server. We can F twelve a machine, we have a password, I can re-image a, you know, duty crafts desktop right there.
Remotely?
Remote, not remotely or sitting there, Jack has to go there, that's, you know, buying a, a store bought laptop, I should say. You know, that's one of, every machine would have to be hand touched. These, uh, we do have to put in, we're not gonna give away the, the all-inclusive password to join these to the network. Nobody's gonna get that, um, I'll leave with that, they can change it after I leave. The, the battery life, you know, I just, as we were chatting, you know, the battery life, Chromebooks are a little bit better. These are lasting. I don't have any statistics, I've taken mine home, I've not charged it in a day. You know, it's lasting the entire time that I've used it, I've used it all day long, um, everything that I do. The battery life on some of the other devices are, are quite, uh, it's almost laughable, you know? The, excuse me.
No, to your point, in the operational analysis you put together, you list that the battery life can typically be eight to sixteen hours.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. The antivirus is a big thing too, the, the management of an antivirus. When we were one-to-one with a desktop PC in every teacher's classroom, you know, that was me and another guy for the entire district. It, it's just the, the management of these devices, these Chromebooks is a lot easier.
Yeah, that, you can't, I mean, you can't dispute that, the, the Chromebook, uh, management system is, 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 uh, has taken a lot of the, um, a lot of the, the hassle and, and one-on-one labor out of it. There are, as you said, management tools though, to do that with Windows based platforms too. In fact, based on where I've worked, there's awfully powerful ones that, like you said, can re-image remotely a PC.
We have, we have access to all that right now.
And you'd be able, I think you'd be able to image and set that up on, on?
Depending on the device.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Sorry, I was late this evening, but kinda taking a step back. The whole point of the Chromebook is basically an internet-enabled device where the kids can get to like the Google Docs and the Google Classroom kind of materials. So, I can totally appreciate what you're saying with the, what the base operating system is and the familiarity for students in their future success. The, what they're doing with these is essentially just accessing their Google documents, so it's kinda like the free flow of information. They're not necessarily creating documents on it, it's all going into their drive and things like that. It's what they're, the Chromebooks are basically gonna be essentially an empty shell with a screen and a battery and a keyboard, that they work via web access to, um, applications. So, having said that, I mean, I, I use Chrome on my Apple, I use Chrome on my Windows thing, to me, it's all the same. You know, I don't have, you know, as long as the device is working for them and I know the big thing, at least from my student, is like having the keyboard, that that's been a big, like, hate to having a more useful tool.
What, uh, how much work, how, how, if these things, for whatever reason, the internet goes down, not that that could happen, but it, it, it did and can again, probably will again. What, what can they do with what is on the Chromebook without it being able to access the internet? We put everything on Google Drive and then, I'm always telling my son that I would prefer that he,
They're setting.
Downloads things to his hard drive and then do the work on there and then put it back out there. In case something goes down, he can still complete his work, so I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's, I mean, you, you've dealt with that, haven't you?
Yeah, there are things on there, you can make your documents as you create available offline so that you can edit them on the device without being on the internet. And once you join the internet again, it will upload in sync with your Google Drive. The documents can be made available offline.
And how come we didn't look closer at, uh, or test a batch of, uh, Net, of Windows based stuff out there?
We, from my research, it, educational, uh, everyone's going to Chromebooks, didn't look at that, just from the, uh, the trends, the educational trend of where everyone's going. My, I don't wanna say, my counterparts in all of the area, school districts that I talk to regularly, they're pushing the iPads out, they're, they all have labs of PCs. And the, the student device is a Chromebook.
Chris, I can answer that a little bit, in terms of cost. So I came from a district that was PC based, HP devices, all of that. I'm a Windows person, teach at the technical college, serve on the board, get the career world, all of that stuff. So, I think Stephen probably accurately described it, when you're looking at what students are using the device for here, it's exactly that, it's, it's an enabled device with a keyboard that allows them to be productive in the world that they've come to know to be, whatever that is. I think when we're looking at producing, or looking at what their future lies, I think that's what our labs are for, as we're looking to add where our career pathways, for our business pathway or IT, computer science pathway, that's what those labs are, to be able to prepare those students specifically for that. Having two kids in college and understanding what their world was and, I mean, many of you know, my son is in computer programming, so I'm thinking, and he chose a MacBook for his device, broke my heart, but he did, so. And he's in the, he's got a job, he's working in the corporate world right now and that's, that's fine. I mean, that, that flexibility for them in terms of being able to determine operating system and where to save files and all of that stuff, very fluid and maybe that's more of a, a generational thing in terms of what that is. And so I'm a strong believer in it, I mean, I don't hold Microsoft certifications for, for, I mean, I get, I get that whole piece of it, but I think having those labs where they are and having those kids specifically where they are, Chris said with our new, the new lab that we'd add to the STEAM piece of it is specifically for training those students in what those are. And so, the mobility of having a personal device to be able to access anywhere, anytime and do that piece of it, and then also work on the productivity certifications and all of that other stuff to prepare those students who know what that is, I think we're trying to prepare for both of those worlds. And also before we do the licensing, because, looking at the cost of that. So, looking at other school districts and providing, if you're looking at students who are going into that, that business piece of it and what the licensing is for cost of that, the device is comparable to get them equipped to be able to be functional was about four hundred dollars, because in terms of, um, having the protection and all of those things. So I think when we look at the costs of what you're able to pu, to do in a standalone lab, a, a Netbook or even a laptop, right now, our labs are too powerful. Right now, I could not do, even on our, our laptops, what we're able to do in our standalone labs for our music production studios or our CAD engineering. I mean, and first of all, you don't wanna ten inch screen, I don't care if it's a Netbook or a Chromebook, you do not wanna be doing CAD engineering, you wanna have double monitors that are probably twenty inches. So, the labs that we have in the, the middle school lab, in our maker's lab, is very intentional, where they have InDesign up and where they have Photoshop up. And that doesn't matter what the platform, if it's Apple or PC, it happens to be PC. So, you're gonna wanna larger monitor for that, the laptop, no matter what you do, isn't gonna suffice for that, even in, in terms of processing power and all of that, that's very hard to manage on a laptop device. So I think at this point in time, and that's why I even said with the schedule, planning out five years always makes me nervous, cause I have no idea what five years in terms of the technology piece brings. But right now, when you compare the two hundred and two dollars as compared to, and I know we're not comparing the iPad thing, but the, what students are using those for, the majority of that pieces of it, we're not teaching, some students, if they're gonna choose to get Microsoft Office certified and actually use Microsoft Word, we're gonna have a lab for them to be able to do that, but their preferred mode of taking notes and sharing it, and that's the, the purpose of Google Drive and Google Docs, to be able to share the collaboration piece of it, that's what the device is for at this point. So I think trying to serve both needs, um, in terms of we have Microsoft products, we have Adobe products in our standalone labs, so those students can have those experiences, because I would say that Adobe is becoming, you know, just as common in workplaces as it is, the Windows thing, if you're talking about proprietary pieces of that. But what the majority of our students are using, and that's why we did some of those student surveys, is really the mobility and flexibility and the online collaboration and accessibility of it. So I think that's really where it is, it's not a matter of either or. And having done the research in other districts, not every single student will work in that Windows based world. I mean, immediately, but they'll be able to adapt in terms of, you know, if they can't do a pivot table in Excel, they're probably gonna be able to be okay.
Can they do that kind of thing with the Chromebook?
Sure, in Google Sheets, there's pivot, there's pivot, yep.
And how, how compatible are the, are the comparable, um, the comparable programs in, like Google Sheets, Google Docs, that kinda stuff, to, how compatible are they with, what, Google Slides, I think? With things like, in, in that order, Excel, Word, PowerPoint?
So I think you can talk to those of us who, I mean, I still prefer my Microsoft products, but the other part of it is, is right now, we have add-in features, so if I call up a Google Doc, it'll say, right now, because I have it, it'll say, open up Microsoft Word, so I can go back and forth. So there are advanced features that I can't do in, if it's Excel or PowerPoint or Word, cause those are still my preferred products. But they have comparable things and we're finding that the students are not maxing out in their high school world, some of those tools. So if they're not doing the lookup tables in Excel and if they're not doing mail merge documents in Word, which most high school students don't have a need for, right? It's, it's compatible in terms of all of the other features and functions that our math department is using in terms of sine and cosine and all of the functions that we would want them to use, that's available in Google Sheets. So, from that, that standpoint, and it's getting a lot more compatible to switch documents back and forth between them. So, that was, that's been, again, upgrades in terms of that, like open in Word or open in Excel or open in PowerPoint.
So if they create at home on a bigger screen, um, because they have it, a project, a presentation in PowerPoint, how much are they gonna have to repair it when they open it up on, cause that's a big pro, that was a big problem with the iPad, was that, you know, I don't know about, about, for example, you know, I, we all know you have kids here too, and you do too, I don't know how much, well, y'all, I don't know how much you guys experienced with, you know, your kids doing a, a project on a computer at home and then, and then emailing it to themselves, getting to school, opening it up and it's.
Absolutely.
It's a mess, so how much of that are we gonna have?
I'm fluidly between the documents right now, I mean, but there are some where, like if, again, if kids are using those advanced features that I just described in the Office suite at home, and I don't know how many families have the Office suite at home, because that's a purchase, I mean, I, the question really is how many families have purchased Office at home, because that's a cost piece of it, where the Google suite is free. So you have to ask yourself, while we're trying to train them at home, you know, if their parents have it for work and it's on their computer and they're using Office, that's great, but many of our student, I mean, in terms of that, but if they're using advanced features or formatting things, they might lose some of that, but it's gonna tell you that what you're losing, you can also save it, save it in compatibility mode. So, that's part of the, as we're revisiting our IT curriculum, especially in our middle school, to try to make sure students are a little bit more, you know, aware of the things in terms of being fluid between. So you're, you're talking, you know, iPad versus Google, those are, one's a hardware piece of it and one is really the software piece of it, so.
Well, they're both interfaces really, I mean, Google, Chrome OS is Google based stuff, right? And the iPad is iOS, so it's.
But we're really using Chrome on the iPads, is what I'm saying, we're using Chrome on either device right now, so the, the operating software that we're using behind it is still Chrome. So the, the operating software that we're using behind it is still Chrome. Kids can use iOS, but they also can use Chrome on the iPad, so it's really not a...
What they're using it for, it doesn't really matter if it's coming off the iPad, it's coming with Chromebook.
Correct, it's still...
We're using the same app.
Well, I, I personally wish that we would have at least tried to price out, um, the comparable netbook to, to, you know, including whatever bells and whistles we needed, because I think it would have been, to me, that's kind of required. If we're going to try to, I don't compare things by saying, "What do you think of this?" versus what you're already using, if there's like three or four different platforms out there. It's like, we're looking at going to something new, you know, find out what's comparable and affordable, and then that might lose one or two of the five different platforms or something, and then, and then you try the other three or four and, and make a decision that way. I'm disappointed that we, in this case, we took tunnel vision on the Chromebook. However, I have no doubt it's a better platform than, that's why I'm torn. It's why I'm, it's why I'm going into all this. It's no doubt a better platform than the iPad. I'm torn between saying, "No, stay with the iPad until you get a good comparison" and, um, and we make a, a better educated, non-tunnel vision decision, because we've already made a tunnel vision decision several years ago, and that's why we have the iPad. That could be cheaper in the long run to, to do a comparison with, with the, uh, with the Windows-based platform. And if that ends up winning out, maybe comparable in price, but better platform, then the district ultimately saves money by not, you know, doing a whole changeover.
What's the possibility that we can look at our, our HP laptop cart right now is getting older. Maybe we, we could pilot that.
The, the only, the only problem is now we're in the situation where we've been given less than 24 hours to make this decision, to take advantage of a $205, what, plus 25, plus 10? So $240, $250, if we have to do the, the thing on the back of it, you know, and the $25 management, you know, control panel piece, so 200, back to $250 on the thing. Here we go, given less than 24 hours to, I mean, you can't really compare anything in that.
Hold on, let me, let me speak to that. So, um, that wasn't something that they controlled or situated? So I just want to, by saying that, it sounds like they've given us 24 hours to make this decision?
No, they haven't.
Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
I understand that.
That was, okay.
No, I, no, it's, it's, you guys are doing what's asked of you, and I think you're doing a good job.
Well, and they're presenting us with an option to save us potentially $20,000, right? We can vote yes or no. They're doing their due diligence, say, "Hey, look, here's an opportunity. We can save $20,000."
I, I understand what's going on, and I'm not questioning their function of their job.
Okay, any, did you...
Um, if it's been addressed, I apologize for being late. There were some concerns about the processing speed on the Chromebooks, that they're slower than what was expected. Is that a function of the network or is that a function of the capacity?
I think it was the patch issue, Chris, that he, they just talked about when there was that patch update.
Yes.
That was the question.
There was a chipset issue that had, that, there was a deep, deep, deep into the processor that not many people here are going to even know how to get to, that an update was, was patched, the issue that would have slowed down the chipsets. All of our Chromebooks were patched within a week. Without us even having to touch them.
So the processing speed was fixed with that patch, though?
The degradation of the processing speed, this particular, it was either media, or meltdown, it was called, or specter, similar to a virus, it was a, similar to a virus, it would have slowed down the processors. And it was patched by Chrome OS.
I checked, the two of our students were piloting the Chromebooks this afternoon, and just, you know, asking them what their opinion was, how the, how it was functioning on the Wi-Fi here, their Wi-Fi at home. And they had not reported any lag or slowness or, they said it's functioning exactly what they had expected to be.
They threw off the whole process, they didn't realize that was going on? Their speed was always the same no matter, before the patching, or did it slow down before the patch?
You wouldn't notice.
You wouldn't notice? Wouldn't notice?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for asking them.
Okay, any other questions?
Stephanie, were you talking about, um, that people have noticed a speed problem? Or are you talking about the, the concern of a speed problem that had been emerging because of the, the virus-like?
And then I don't know. Because someone, someone mentioned that there was...
So you don't know if it was an existing speed problem or something that was on the verge?
There was someone that said that the Chromebook was functioning very slowly.
So it is, so it was already functioning slowly?
But I don't know where that was relative to the patch.
Was that based on the question you mean that was tossed out, or...
There was just a comment that there was a student whose Chromebook was functioning very slowly.
And I think that was one of the students that you looked into today, which was not related to the Chromebook. It was related to a different issue of...
I believe it was related to the student's account.
Yeah.
We're, we're looking to see if it was from some extensions that may be running in the background, because the same devices were given to the pilot students as well as to the elementary. And I asked the fifth grade teachers this afternoon if they've noticed anything as well, and they said no. So I, I think it's going to be related to that unique profile.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Comments?
I would just say that of my three kids, they go back and forth between different platforms very easily. And they don't, they're seamlessly, like they could go from the Mac to the PC to an iPad to a Chromebook very easily. And they don't seem, and I think that's to their benefit.
I'm sorry, who are you, and...
I'm Katie Leo.
And how...
And I have three kids here in Wendell.
How old?
They're ninth grade, sixth grade, and fifth grade.
Thanks very much.
And, um, I would say that also my ninth grader came home today, and he had a project he was doing where they created a Google Doc in class, but it's a group project, and they could all get on the Google Doc, it's a shared doc, and they got on, but he didn't use his iPad. He immediately went to our home computer, because on his iPad, he can't open several windows and type and be researching and typing into the doc at the same time. So this would be a benefit, that you could actually type into the doc and be researching it, and it's, you've got a keyboard, which he doesn't, he won't even use his iPad for. But my question is, are we going to get our teachers on board? Because he's also had to make an iMovie this year, and, which is great, but are we going, are all of our teachers on board with maybe not having that that I know they use a lot?
Yeah, one of the questions, one, that's a very interesting question, because right now, the device that our teachers have is not what our students have, and I've often wondered if they had to work with an iPad Mini, how that would change their world also. Because, um, and so right now, you know, they're requiring that, but I'm just like, if, if you can be that productive with a keyboard, think about what, you know, when you're assigning a junior and a senior a 10-page paper, that's really not an equitable piece. So the, the carts of iPads are to say that, hey, if you, if iMovie is, you know, very easy, you can grab it and just, you know, just like most, you know, we'll take a phone and do that. So that, that device in terms of doing that, our hopes are that with that, having that there, that they're going to realize that there are more tools available, even with the Chromebook, or when it's really proprietary that the iPad is the best place to do an iMovie or whatever tools are there for this project, hey, here's a cart of them, you can check them out, or we're going to use it for this class project. But for those limited uses, when we're, I mean, hopefully, we're not doing iMoovies in every class every single day. But when we do that, and, and if that still is a preferred device, we're hoping that kids, as we know, are, tend to be the best mentors to our adults in using technology, as you just described. And so they're going to be much more creative in finding solutions and much more flexible and adaptable, and they're going to be able to seamlessly provide that tool to them and just say, "Hey, what about this?" And so right now, teachers get very, you know, in the mode that it has to be this device with this software. And I think that as we looked at the survey results, and Todd said that, too, that teacher who said they can't because that, they believed that, and, and he's like, "Nope, that's totally available because it's a browser thing," and they just were unaware of it. So I think that, um, that is, that is our plan to be able to do, that we asked any teachers who wanted to have a device to be able to look at it, but I think it's very important that they work, or at least have that experience to understand when they're asking their students to do work with a device, that they have some experience, what they can or can't do, because I think we're getting a little bit skewed on, you know, how easy it is or not easy it is to do something when they're sitting with this device and their students are sitting with an iPad Mini, that's very, very different. So it doesn't matter if it's geometry class or English class or whatever it is, that, that, you have to have a compatible device so the teachers are really empathizing with what the students are doing, so...
I mentioned, I mentioned that years ago, it's like, how about we, if it's good enough for our kids, how about we switch all the teachers over to iPad Minis, and I got, of course, some very weird looks. But, I mean, if we expect the kids to be able to do stuff, we got to be able to know what they can do.
Okay, any other?
I just have a question. So when you start, if this goes through...
Can you just, I'm sorry, just say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie Bomberg. I have a sixth and an eighth grader at the middle school.
Thanks.
So I'm in Wachowski School District, I work at a grade school there. And I get to have fun with iPads, unfortunately, over there, because it's a one-to-one school in the grade school level. But we're also doing an upgrade right now, where everybody, not everybody, we had 200 iPad Pros come in. So we're in the process of phasing out the old two, three, four-year-old iPads from the kids and getting them their new iPad. They have the option to purchase their old iPad, and then they just pay the school district. Is that something we, those ever thought, I mean, I know we were talking about making a cart then, so they would still be available, but, I mean, I don't know how much we would make back, would that be a supplement?
It could be. I think two years ago, we did that with someone. We had a reduction. Right now, because of the ages of them, it's possible, and we're trying to see, to supplement our elementary schools with what it is and keep that. So I think that when we actually look at the inventory that we have, if that's an option, I think that we've done it in the past, so it would be something we consider. We just have to compare where the inventory needs to flow to, to create backups, to make sure we have enough spares for those grades that will still maintain the iPads, because obviously, we don't want to purchase new ones if we're trying to phase them out in that cycle. But we have done it in the past, so I think we would consider it. Chris has a question.
Uh, Chris Rupen, I have a eighth grader and a sixth grader coming in. Both my kids are super excited about the Chromebooks. We have Windows-based stuff at home, and my IT husband and my son both swear about Windows, everything. Like, they would want everything to be Linux, so that's just another...
Neither Windows, either.
Platforms, and again, how fluid they are. Also, when, when you're talking about like selling the iPads and community outreach to community members who are not part of, you know, the district, older individuals, thoughts of like iPads potentially being sold to older, I, I don't want to say the word elderly, but like older people in the community that might benefit from this discovery of what they can find an iPad. And I'm trying to get my mom an iPad, you know, in a month or so, when I go visit her in Florida, but, but just another idea of, you know, further referendum, communicating out to other people, maybe a potential idea of reaching out.
She mentioned older. She talking about me?
She didn't find anybody up here.
Okay, so then with that, I'll take a motion to approve the Chromebook purchase as outlined by Mike and Dr. Ilson.
So moved.
What's the...
Second?
Second?
Second.
What's the total again?
Yeah, so the proposal is to not go above $85,000, which is 417 Chromebooks.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Now I'll take a motion to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851 to discuss specific personnel performance data. A motion?
So moved.
And then second?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Nancy?
Aye.
Quinn?
Aye.
Stephanie? Jonathan, aye. John?
John, aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you all.
Thanks for coming.